Welcome to this week's meeting of the Rockland Board of Selectmen coming to you live on WRPS from the H. Bernard Monahan Memorial Room at Rockland Town Hall. On the agenda this week, we've got Rockland's Best, a number of licenses, and a Rockland Cares update. The Board will be going into executive session shortly after opening this session. WRPS will be back for the open session at approximately 7:15. Now here's the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Mr. Larry Ryan.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Selectmen's meeting for Tuesday, August 14, 2018. Please stand while we will have to pledge allegiance. Mr. Mullin.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, in his love, for liberty and justice.
Good evening and welcome. Please be advised that this open meeting is being broadcast live and recorded by WRPS for playback on Comcast Channel 14 and Verizon Channel 31. Will also be available for online video on-demand viewing at wrpsrockland.com within 24 hours of its conclusion as other recent recording meetings and community events. Please go to wrpsrockland.com for further information. I'll let the team -- I made a motion to go to executive session to reconvene.
I'll make that motion.
Oh, you have to say what do you take place.
I'm sorry, for the purpose of discussion threatened, pending litigation, and for the purpose of discussion strategy with respect to contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
I will call Mr. O'Laughlin.
Aye.
Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
And Mr. Ryan says yes also. We'll be back. Welcome back to the meeting of Tuesday, August 14, 2018. Under community announcements, we're going to bring up Rockland's Best, and Marcy Birmingham will...
Yes? Are we good?
Yes.
All right, this will be the best part of the meeting, everybody. And Representative DeCoste, would you please come up and join us?
I'll let you do the talking.
All right, you get to talk next then. So, I have the honor of announcing the award of Rockland's Best to Patricia Foley, who is an incredibly giving volunteer for the town of Rockland for a number of years. I'm a newbie in Rockland. I've been here for three and a half years, and Pat has been volunteering on a number of projects with me the whole time that I've been here, but she's been a mainstay for the town long before I ever came around. She's one of those unsung heroes who serves asking for a lot of credit for herself and gives selflessly on a number of projects across the town. So, it is with a great honor that I get to present this certificate of recognition to Pat Foley. Would you come up with us, Pat, for just a minute? It says, "This plaque is to honor Rockland resident Patricia A. Foley as one of Rockland's Best for her many years of faithful volunteer service on numerous town boards and committees. Pat's contribution as a Rockland volunteer is exemplary and greatly appreciated," and that's an understatement. We're so thankful for you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Speak.
Thank you.
One thing I do want to...
Dave, jump right in.
Yeah, thanks. I basically just want to thank everybody that has helped me do this. Thank you, everybody.
Welcome. I'll be very brief, because nobody came here to listen to a politician speak, but for those who don't know me, I'm Dave DeCoste. I represent the 5th Plymouth, which is Norwell, Hanover, and Rockland, and the state legislature. And one of the nice things about my job is, once a year, we get to nominate an unsung heroine, and we go from town to town, and this year, we had Rockland to pick from. And I'll tell you that immediately when I explained what this award entailed, Mrs. Foley came up over and over and over and over and over again. And so, it was a very easy choice for me. It is incredible how much you do. You are certainly one of the institutions in Rockland, and it was a pleasure. I was very proud to have you up at the State House and in the hall of flags and to have you recognized. So, just once again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda will be the open session minutes of July 17, 2018.
Make a motion at your open hearing?
No, we'll open minutes.
What? Oh gee, I'm sorry. I thought we were...
Nope. So, I got minutes of the open session, July 17, 2018.
So, I make a motion to approve July 17?
A second.
Sorry about that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Right.
That's a vote. And I got minutes, open minutes, sessions of July 31, 2018.
Make a motion to approve. Sorry, Mike.
We'll do that.
Okay, I get a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, the executive session minutes of July 17, 2018.
Want this one?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
All matters to be...
All you let. Not to be released until all matters, all matters are settled.
You get a motion?
A second.
All in favor? That's a vote. You get executive session minutes of July 31, 2018.
I make a motion to approve our pending, all matters being settled.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. The next on the agenda was a public hearing for a flammable storage license at the 3M Company, 30 Commercial Road, Rockland.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing for the flammable storage license at the 3M Company at 30 Commerce Road, Rockland.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's open.
So, Mr. Chairman, we should have a representative from 3M Company here in the audience with us. Amanda, please feel free to come on up. Right here at the podium. So, in your binders, you'll see the application from 3M for a flammable storage license, which the fire department has already signed their approval on. Chief Duffy is away this week, so couldn't be at the meeting, but he has approved this application. And Building Inspector Tom Rubel has put a short email in the binder as well, just noting that he would prefer, if he were present, you make it conditional upon his final building permits being issued. And you're welcome to present any information to the Board that you want.
Does the Board have any questions? An offer?
If I could hear from the applicant first?
Sure. Your name and the address?
My name is Amanda Jarvis, and I'm with 3M. We're at 30 Commerce Road in Rockland, Massachusetts. Do you need my home address?
No, that's good. That works for us.
All right.
Seem to have the papers in the lab. Do you have any questions, Chairman?
No, everything seems to be in order. My question is, what about what systems? I'm sure you guys have systems in place. What systems you have in place for disposal?
For disposal, we use Veolia Environmental to dispose of all of our hazardous waste.
The only question I have, Mr. Chairman, like, I mean, like, if other fire chief was here, I would actually ask him, but obviously, given the, oh, chemicals, oh, that, like, are used, like, is there any plan or any type of training that happens with the fire department, you know, like, oh, like, for the, oh, like, any event that there is an event, and the fire department has to respond, you know, so they know, oh, what the chemicals are, like, oh, like, and I imagine, and, you know, they know that just, you know, like, off the, off the top of their head anyways, but, oh, you know, what training, oh, about how to, like, respond or to deal with those particular chemicals and the health risks, like, if there are any, and then, and things along those lines? I mean, is there any training or, you know, what type of, oh, partnership, I guess, between 3M and the fire department along those lines?
Yeah, so, we provide a, it's called a contingency plan...
Okay.
...that tells all the emergency equipment that we have on site, what our emergency plans are in the event that we do have any kind of incident. We do work very closely with the fire department, and they bring their people on-site to tour our facility, so they become familiar with it.
Great.
They have new fire, they have new firemen that they want to bring on-site this year as well.
Great.
So, our doors are open to the fire department.
Okay.
Just so you know, in getting this flammable license request for increasing our storage amount, we're building an internal building. We'll have tanks to hold, hold them. The fire suppression system, we have A-T triple F foam, as well as sprinkler system. We have containment in case we did have a fire and we had to collect sprinkler water. We have a place to hold all that. It's all been reviewed by fire protection engineers and professional engineers.
Thank you.
I mean, everything seems to be in order. She's got the approval of the fire chief. I'll make a motion that we, that we grant them this license.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second to approve the license. All in favor? Three of all vote.
Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Then, that's, you know, I made a mistake again. We should have, we should have closed the meeting and then voted again.
Filled in.
So, we'll have to vote to close the meeting. All right?
So, I make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Meeting is closed. I make a motion again now.
I'll make a...
(inaudible) make a contingency plan, issuance of building permit by the building commission.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept the license for a flammable storage contingent on the ability to obtain a permit from the building commission.
(inaudible).
Okay. So, move or second? Sorry.
So, a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Got to remember, because end those hearings. Let's see, next on the agenda would be special election. Do we have the town clerk here with us?
You do. I don't want to crowd the town clerk, but we actually, and Chris in my office actually helped out a lot. The Board has a decision tonight to fill a couple of vacancies to call for a special election, and Dawn has done a lot of work in terms of the specific timelines. There are several statutes that come into play. It's, it's not all that easy to sort all of this out, but we worked with the Secretary of State's office, and we come up with a recommended timeline. But as a preliminary matter, the Board has two vacancies at this time. The first vacancy is for a term that expires April 13, 2019, and the second vacancy is a term that expires April 11, 2020. So, there are two specific vacancies, and if the Board is so inclined to call a special election, then it is to fill those vacancies, and people have to take a ballot for one vacancy or the other. But I'll defer to Dawn to talk about recommendations on a timeline and that kind of thing.
We did talk to the State about the possibility of holding the special election the same day as the state election on November 6. We did get approval. It would save us having to staff two separate elections, so it, it would save approximately So, we're asking that you consider having the special election Tuesday, November 6. It would be from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in, to go along with the state election. If you give the permission, or if you call the election, the nomination papers could be available tomorrow. They would, the last day to obtain November, nomination papers would be September 14. So, they'd have one day shy of a month to get their signatures. You have to have 50 signatures on nomination papers. The last day to submit the nomination papers would be Tuesday, September 18. The last day to withdraw would be October 4. Once that day passes, then we can actually have the ballots printed. And the last day to register to vote for that election would be the same as for the state election, which would be October 17.
If the Board were inclined to choose that date, one of the things we looked at is, could you call a special election sooner? And essentially, with all the timelines that Dawn has talked about for making nomination papers available, et cetera, you might have been able to call an election a couple of weeks sooner. That's really, that's really all we're losing is a matter of a couple of weeks.
Well, we had gave the $7,000, but it happened on the same day.
How would that work? Just be two separate ballots at the poll station?
Yep.
And just the poll takers would make people aware prior to...
The poll takers would have to ask whether they want to vote for the state election, the town election, or both.
Any extra machines needed for that election?
No.
Okay. So, the machines will sort them?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, and because it would be a state election, early voting hours would be available too.
Okay.
And it would have to be available for the town election.
I make a motion that we, we hold the election, we scheduled the election for November 6.
I would second that motion.
And that's, we're going to make part of that motion that the nomination papers, you can start tomorrow and all the details?
Actually, the Board's only vote is to set the date.
It's to set the date.
The rest of that falls to the town clerk.
I get a motion and a second for November 6. All in favor? Let's a vote.
Dawn, like, would you be able to, like, put something up on our website as well to announce that?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks, Dawn. You're going to be busy.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, as always.
All right, we have appointments, number six. Ms. Birmingham?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have a list of appointments that we need to read for you to then choose to approve. Before we do the appointments, Mr. O'Laughlin, Selectman O'Laughlin suggested taking the Water Commissioner appointment and moving it up to this agenda item as well. We had a vacancy on the Water Commission that we advertised for about a month, and we've had one applicant to fill the seat, and Water Superintendent, Mr. Callahan, is here to speak to the appointment for Bob Corby Jr. So, the agenda item for the Water Commissioner is number 12.
Do we need a motion to take that out of order?
Why don't we, anyway?
Do you need a motion? I don't know the answer to whether you need a motion to take it out of order.
I'll make a motion that we take item number 12 at the place of number six.
Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote. All right, the Water Commissioner.
Mr. Callahan?
(inaudible).
Okay.
Chairman.
Chairman, come on up.
I'm calling the chairperson.
June Pat Donnelly, Chairman of the Water Commissioner, Rockland Water Commissioner. And at a meeting, we had a unanimous vote to elect, appoint Bob Corby until the next election.
I would make a motion to, that this Board will concur.
Do you have any other, any other applicants at the time?
None whatsoever.
Now, this is the seat that was vacated by Bill Cormier?
And Bob knows a lot about the Water Department, so he's a good fit.
I have no issue. I'll, I'll second Mr. Mullin's motion.
You get a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Corby as the Water Commissioner. All in favor? That is a vote.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pam.
All right, with that said, we can go back to our list of appointments...
Back to appointments.
...which I'll read for you, and then you can accept them or not at the same time. So, we have Americans with Disabilities Act Commission, which is a three-year appointment for myself, Marcy Birmingham, 31 Sawmill Lane; Charter Maintenance Committee, three-year appointment for Felicia Lennon, 189ven Circle; Cultural Arts Council, three-year appointments for Nancy Parmenter, 145 Central Street, Rockland; and Deborah Vecchione, 635 Salem Street, and I apologize to anyone whose names I'm mispronouncing; Fire Station Building Committee, annual appointment for Gene Blady, 118 Turner Road; Christopher Di Filippo, 114 Beale Street; Scott Duffy, 86 Stanton Street; James Killinger, 44 Robin Lane; Michael Mullin Jr., 127 Levin Road; Charles Williams III, Five Topping Avenue; David Woolley, 360 Union Street; a local building inspector, annual appointment for John Unzis, 48 Bridge Street, Bridgewater; an alternate local building inspector, annual appointment, Robert Curran, 31 Dane Terrace Whitman; electrical inspector, annual appointments to Michael Dalton, 8 Chris Roy Drive, Rockland; and James Paul, 162 Webster Street; alternate electrical inspector, annual appointment, Nicholas Erner, 203 Beach Street, Rockland; gas inspector, annual appointment to William Callahan Jr., 92 Center Avenue, Rockland. And then the last few, alternate gas inspector, annual appointment to Gary Young, 337 Broadway Street, Hanover; plumbing inspector, annual appointment, William Callahan Jr., 92 Center Ave., Rockland; and alternate plumbing inspector, annual appointment, Gary Young, 337 Broadway Street, Hanover. That's our list of appointments.
Make a motion to accept the appointments.
Just a quick question I asked, like, I'm probably missing something easy, but the local building inspector, like, that's not Tom Rubel. Maybe I'm just missing something.
No, he's Tom Rubel.
This is local building inspector if Tom Rubel is unavailable, on vacation or out of...
Yep. That's, okay. That makes sense. That was my only question. So, I would second Mr. O'Laughlin's motion.
Motion and a second to accept all the people on the paper here for appointments. All in favor? That's a vote.
Thank you.
All right, we got a one-day liquor license for Doubletree by Hilton, 929 Hingham Street, four nights, September 10 to the 13, 2018, from 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Yes. Yeah, Gianni Saltalomachia from the Doubletree, and director of sales over there. We got a one-day liquor license last year. We actually got one in May as well, the Ragnar Race, and last year for the same group. It's Mohawk Rubber out of Hingham. They're going to be doing a sales seminar and using our ballroom, and the outdoor area is right there, and they might mosey on out with a drink or two, and I just wanted to make sure that we were covered. There's no big party going on or anything, just, just, they're going to be in the hotel all week, and just wanted to make sure. Last, last year, they had a tent outside and did an event. They needed it. But this year, I just want to make sure I cover my bases for all days.
Any questions, Chairman?
No, everything seems to be in order. I'll make a motion to grant the one-day, the liquor license for four days to the Doubletree in Rockland.
I'll second that.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jan.
Have a safe time.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, there's a one-day liquor license for Old Colony VFW, 22 Church Street, for August 25, 2018.
Joseph Androtti, I'm the post commander at Rockland VFW.
Jeff and Jerry, 22 Bradford Street, Rockland. Currently, the State Senior Vice Commander for the Power and Mass VFW, as far as...
Yeah, what are you going to be doing that day on the 20? What is it?
We're going to be having a pig roast that day, and we'll be, you know, having food and entertainment for the kids and all, you know, a bunch of other stuff like that.
So, you'll be in and out of the building, please?
Yes.
Both in and out of the building. That's fine. That's good. Very good.
This is the year we event?
Yes, this is our fourth year.
Fourth year, and had no incident in the past that any of us are aware of. Everything seems to be in order. I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for August 25, 4/6.
Second.
Take a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, that's a vote. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Chairman.
I want to thank you.
That's it.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you, Mr. Androtti.
Yeah, right. Let's see, a dog walk fundraiser, fall cleanup proposal.
Mr. Chairman, I think we missed a common...
Oh, sorry, common victor's license for Romano's Grill and Pizzeria, 440 Union Street.
Yes, come on up, Chairman.
Please excuse me for passing over you. I didn't mean to. Just tell the people your names and what you hope to do up there.
Go ahead. My name is Andres Espinar. This is my partner.
I also have a...
Actually, we opened the doors on August 3 for takeout and pickup. We just trying to open the seating area.
Very nice. Any questions from the Board?
This is located at the Old Manny's?
Yes.
And you've been open since August 3?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like everything is in order again, so I would make a motion to grant a common victor license for Romano's.
I'll second that motion.
Get a motion and a second. All in favor? That's a vote. Congratulations, gentlemen.
Welcome to Rockland, guys.
Thank you.
We'll have that ready for you tomorrow.
Thank you.
So, the dog walk fundraiser and fall cleanup proposal. Ladies? Introduce yourselves to the public.
Hi, my name's Emily Harrison. I live at 94 Smith Lane in Rockland.
Hi, I'm Megan Murphy. I live at 39 Dearing Square, Rockland. So, we're here tonight to propose, well, first off, we're from the Reimagine Rockland Group, and I am a member of the Streetscapes Committee, and tonight, we're here to propose a Fall Cleanup Day, and Megan will speak on a dog walk event. The part that I'm going to present on is the Cleanup Day, and our main goal of the Streetscapes Committee is to have a, present a clean, safe, and beautiful downtown. So, this Cleanup Day will touch on the clean, safe, and beautiful part of our mission for Reimagine Rockland. And last April, we had a volunteer event, and we had almost 200 volunteers, and we went along Union Street and then down the rail trail in both directions, and because we had so many volunteers, we also had members at Beach Hill, Old Beach Street, and the Town Forest. So, this year, we're hoping to do it again on Saturday, September 23, from 10 to 12, and we're looking for volunteers. In the past, last April, we had volunteers from the town, the businesses, the schools, and the churches. So, we're doing that once we get approval again from you. And then I'm going to turn it over to Megan to talk about hers, us, September 23.
So, I, I also am with Reimagine Rockland, and when I'm not doing that, I'm home with my three dogs, who I love very much, and I spend a lot of my free time walking them, and I've noticed there's a lot of other kind of dog walk events that people do kind of around the area. I thought it would be kind of a great way to kind of partner with Emily, you know, you have on a Saturday, you do your cleanup, you clean up the streets, and then you kind of enjoy the clean streets on Sunday, have your walk with your dog. We'll call it Bulldog Pride Walk Event, kind of a fun way to show off our downtown and all the other great things that we have going on. I've been kind of talking with Mike and Marcy. Obviously, we need some approval from other departments around town, but the idea would be, you know, bring your dogs if you have them. If not, that's fine, but just kind of take a short walk and kind of see what Rockland has to offer.
Sounds good.
And just so the Board is aware, I did speak with our insurance company, and they were fine with the liability for a dog walk, as long as the dogs are leashed and the owners sign the liability waiver at the beginning of the walk, which we would do.
So, the dog walk comes today after the cleanup?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Saturday, Sunday, the 22nd and 23rd. And then, like, the only question, Megan, like, I would assume, I, like, once you move forward from us, then you would reach out to the, our police chief and just...
Yes.
And, you know, run everything by them and make sure they're all coordinated and approved.
And we talked about inviting the dog officer to come to the event as well.
We ought to also have the town clerk, since she collects all the fees for the licenses and things, and she holds...
She might be able to go mail her.
I mean, I imagine that the Rock, I imagine that Rockland's number-one dog will have some sort of medal around its neck saying, "I'm number one," and parade him around.
Or Max.
There you go. Max will go, as long as somebody feeds him.
There you go. Oh, so, no, this is a, oh, can I just want to, like, thank Megan, I'm Emily, for bringing these two ideas before, second Megan. And first, talked about the, the dog walk. And, oh, Marcy and I, like, the same, we've got our kind of, our reaction about the liability. Marcy, right away, we reached out to the insurance company to confirm that, you know, we could take steps... we could take steps to, you know, protect the town and our liability, and, but the work they've put into this already has been amazing, and the work over the next month that's, I'm gonna continue to go into it, will be just as amazing. Like I probably won't buy a dog before the event, maybe I'll walk one of my kids or something, but, but I make, like I would make a motion to approve both.
Yeah, I'll second, I'll second that motion. You know, another, another great thing, you know, obviously, Mike and I are biased being part of Reimagine Rockland, but another great thing to come out of Reimagine Rockland, so keep the momentum going. Great job.
So we have a second, I mean, motion in a second for the fall cleanup proposal for 9:23, 10 to 12, and the dog walk will be 9:24, 10 to 12?
11:00 AM.
11:00 AM?
So it's actually the 22nd and the 23rd?
Where are we meeting on the, on the, the dog walk?
I was thinking the stadium, pending approval for the folks that.
At least the park a lot down there?
Yeah.
Are you gonna botch them in the stadium, or are you gonna?
So it depends on approval for the park department, right?
We'll just have to take into consideration if the stadium's under construction at that time. I think Megan has.
Whatever you guys need.
So it is the 22nd and the 23rd, right?
Yes.
The 22nd and 23rd? 22nd from 10 to 12, and the dog walk is 23rd at 11:00 AM.
Make a motion in a second on the paper? That's a vote. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, thanks.
Thank you, Paul.
Number 11 is the plumbing and gas inspector approval, I believe we've done that, haven't we?
Mr. Chairman, this came up at a meeting a few months ago, where the board had initially asked for more information before you approved the plumbing and gas inspector appointment. We did just appoint him on the laundry list of appointments, however, this is the letter of confirmation for his appointment, which Mr. Rubel is comfortable with, attorney Clifford has reviewed, and our HR director said is sufficient. So we would like to have the board.
Okay.
Approve this letter if you're willing.
Didn't we approve it based contingent on having this, so isn't it already approved?
Right, we already approved it, at one point we.
Or is that the one that, is that the one that we tabled?
This is the one, I believe, now this was before you appointed me into this position, but I believe you tabled this because you were researching whether you wanted to offer a contract rather than a letter of appointment, and these have been at-will positions traditionally.
Yep. I'll make, make a motion to accept the contract, contract letter.
Second.
Make a motion in a second to approve the plumbing and gas inspector, all in favor? That's a vote. What a commission we took here with him. Number 13 is Health Circle memorandum of agreement with the community host agreement.
Yes, do we have a representative from Health Circle? There you are, Mr. Westhorpe, welcome.
Mike Westhorpe from Health Circle, 21 Commerce Road. How are you?
Let me just explain what's going on here, where the town of Rockland has people applying for marijuana licenses to sell, cultivate, or whatever, there's a number of different ones, health ones and others. But what we've done is to form a community host agreement, or host community agreement, which spells out what the company will, is gonna pay, pay the town. I'm just gonna read some of the basic points. The Health Circle will pay us 3% of the gross sales on retail and all other sales, and this is above and beyond the regular sales stack, 3% we get. The Cannabis Control Commission guidance to town advisors that 3% is the maximum permitted. Our agreement provides for a minimum payment annually for five years of $100,000, which they project to meet, and a maximum of $500,000, which they do not meet, expect to meet. Our lawyer, Robert Galvin, said, "I asked and they agreed to advance some money at commencement of business of $25,000 and balance due at the end of the year within specified period of time." They will also pay Rockland real estate and personal property taxes. They will work with the Rockland PD on security, and this is spelled out in great detail. They offered to pay back another $20,000 a year to charitable organizations involved with the treatment of education. Rockland, Rockland Cares would be one, I'm sorry, and then veterans organizations, so they're gonna give $20,000 a year on top of everything else to do that. The Selectmen acknowledge that we have a, that we're gonna support their jobs and everything else, so. It really is a good, good deal for the town. And this whole business, the next five years is crucial, because we're gonna be making money and the towns around us are not, so these things are only gonna last for so long, these community agreements, and we want to do the best we can to maximize what really quite benefits come to the town of Rockland for doing this, so. We have a community host agreement before you, gentlemen, would you like to say anything else? You guys have an agree?
No, I mean, you guys maxed it out.
Well, no, no, I agree, I agree, it's, I always feel funny about these things, because quite frankly, it looks, it looks like a little bit more than just being buddies, you know what I mean? There's, there are things that could be said about it, but the state allows us to do it, so.
Yeah, and we're comfortable with it, you know, going forward, and we have the medicinal host agreement already in place.
Right.
Yeah.
Very good. So what would be the pleasure for the board?
Just my quick thoughts, I mean, obviously, with the town approved, like a town meeting, zoning for it, you know, like it's been the intention of this board to, you know, to live by the will of the voters since the 2016 election, you know, thanks to the work of attorney Galvin, like and you, Mr. Chairman, over the past few weeks, we, you know, like we do have an agreement, I believe that's all beneficial to the town, and hopefully this entity as well, but also has like a number of safeguards for the town, and I think for the company as well, so, you know, the law's here, the, like everything's here, like and it makes, you know, oh, it really makes sense for Rockland not to be in the game at this point, so I would, I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Make a motion in a second to approve the memorandum of community host agreement with Health Circle. All in favor? That's a vote. Good luck, guys. Now, the next on the list, kind of, is the Rockland Cares update. Do you want to come up there, young lady? How are you? Tell everyone who you are and?
So, yeah, I'm Trisha Fallon, 10 Daniel Teague Drive in Rockland. Rockland Cares has come before the board, I think last year. We like to periodically update the Selectmen and the town as to what we're doing, and for those of you that are not familiar with Rockland Cares, it was founded by our illustrious Selectmen, Mike Mullin, and former school committee person, Marilyn Werkeiser. So we've been.
You as well, Trish.
Well, I've been a founding member since 2011, so this is our eighth year, our eighth annual vigil is coming up, which is a big deal for us. So that is on September 13th, if people want to join us at the Holy Family Church this year, it starts at about 6:15, there'll be resources available before that. Typically, we reach about 500 people, which is nice. We're reaching a lot of people on social media, is our biggest way to reach people with our message. Our job primarily is to provide information and support to individuals and families and friends who are dealing with substance abuse disorder. So we do that primarily through resources we have online, our partnership with the schools, our partnership with, we have a stakeholders meeting in Rockland where town people can come together, we've had Selectmen, we've had clergy, et cetera. We go, we're everywhere, we try to get as many places as we can. We were at the Brockton Rocks for a night out for recovery, we are going to be on September 8th at the Hanover Mall for a presentation called Weeding Through the Myths, Weeding Through the Myths. We are going to, we're everywhere, we're at parent conferences, trying to reach as many people as we can, but the biggest way we can reach people is through social media. If you don't follow us on Facebook, please do, we have about 2,000 people following us there. We're doing a media campaign on Thursdays for about a month and a half. Brian McDonald, Officer Brian McDonald, released a video, it's called "I Am Somebody, You Are Somebody," and he talked about what the police are doing to help. We had an addict, a former addict, I should say, someone from the recovery house, Dennis, who did a very moving video last week, Jay Murphy, who, a Rockland resident, grew up in Rockland, did a video, so it's a nice way of reaching people. So we are having our first annual fundraiser coming up, Saturday, August 25th, from 3 to 8 at Players, tickets are $20, there's live music, and there'll be raffles, et cetera, so if you're not at the pig roast, you can come to Players, and that'll be great, because we're gonna have a scholarship with some proceeds from that. So those are our big dates, is the fundraiser on the 25th, the vigil on the 13th, and we're having our, we meet about twice a month, typically Tuesdays, the Webster Care Rehab is great about letting us use their facility, and our next meeting, which will be Tuesday, August 28th at 6:30, is our volunteer meeting, where we get ready for the vigil. So we'll be doing all kinds of things, and we would encourage people to join us for that.
How many volunteers would you say currently happen?
We have, I would say about 20 people per meeting, there's probably about 10 people who show up all the time. So, and we're really fortunate, because, well, fortunate in some ways and unfortunate in others, we belong to a coalition, so we're under the umbrella of the Brockton Area Prevention Coalition, and other towns like Whitman Will, East Bridgewater, EB Hope, belong as well. And it's, we go to these regional meetings, and it's interesting, because we are almost exclusively volunteer, which is great that we get volunteers from the community, but, for example, East Bridgewater is almost exclusively townspeople, it's the police chief, it's the fire department, it's the Selectmen, it's all, they don't get volunteers from the community. So obviously, ideally, it'd be good to have a mixture of both, but it's just funny how it lays in different towns. Can I?
So I have a, I have a good friend who works for the DOH, and I'll share his information with you after, after the meeting, and I'll send you something. He is working, actually, he's volunteering to be a resource for Rockland, as, you know, there is an issue of overdose, he'll be a resource at the state level for whoever that person is, and he can get them, you know, put into a bed and stuff like that, into a rehab facility. So he's volunteering, I'll share that information with you. Have we seen, I mean, I don't wanna say a rise or a decline in the number of overdoses recently?
I believe the last time I did it was stable, so one of the things I omitted to mention, one of the things that I think was, one of the coolest things we did this year, was we had a training for people in the trades, and that was also at Players, Jackie's great about donating space there. So I have this flyer that I'm gonna read from, so from 2011 to 2016, there were 63 overdose deaths in Rockland, so we're one of the hardest-hit communities. 55 of those people were working at the time of their death, 33% of those were working in the trades. So the trades are really hit hard, and a lot of people work in small mom-and-pop stores where they don't have access to HR. So this was a training where you could come as an individual who was maybe using, or as an employer, and, you know, find out how to get Narcan, how to get help, those kind of things. So because it was successful, and it could have been more successful, it, it was well-attended, but it was during the crazy blizzards, so I think we would have drawn even more people, but they're gonna replicate it, I believe they have three more planned, they won't be in Rockland this time, they're spreading the wealth, but Rockland residents are welcome to attend.
For all you do and everyone, I mean, Lindsey, Helen, who just left unfortunately, but I mean, like the whole group.
Stacy Gardner's doing great.
Yeah, Stacy, I mean, like everyone who's there, I mean, it's such a committed group, and it's really, you know.
Hopefully we'll see people at the vigil and the fundraiser.
Absolutely.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Trish.
Number 15 on the list will be Selectmen and Town Hall Communications, Ms. Birmingham.
Well, I would defer that to Selectmen O'Laughlin.
So, you know, we've had a lot of, you know, conversations, a lot of residents have been approaching, asking how, I guess, they can go about getting on the agenda for a meeting, or asking why there's no open forum. So, you know, I was thinking about it, and I had a conversation with Marcy, you know, I'd be willing, and I'm not sure if you guys are, I'd be willing, I guess, to make myself available for a couple hours a week, for residents to come up and bring their concerns to me. I don't know if you guys are on board, you know, if we rotate every third week, you know, we give a couple hours, whatever, wherever it fits into our schedule, a resident can come up and they can express their concerns to us, and maybe we can help facilitate and just send them in the right direction. You know, we can bring them to the right department and maybe liaison for them to that, that conversation. If it's not something that we can fix, then we'll put them on the agenda for the next meeting, and we'll have the department that, that they're questioning or have concerns with in attendance as well, so that we can handle, handle their, their concerns. I don't know if it's something that you guys are, you know, up for, I mean, I don't think it'd have to be a crazy commitment, maybe it's an hour or two, I'm available, you know, maybe a morning a week or something like that for a couple hours. Mike, I know evenings are probably better for you, Larry, you know, you're around all the time, so. So I don't know if it's something you guys, you guys want to do, I think now, more than ever, you know, the residents want access to us, and they wanna kind of know what's going on, and I think it's a step in the right direction towards, you know, what we're striving for, which is, you know, the ultimate transparency with our residents. You know, and as far as communications from Town Hall, you know, I asked if we put that back on, and Mike, you had mentioned something a few months back, I just wanted to give you, I guess, an opportunity to maybe revisit it, about talking about a Town Hall newsletter from the department heads that we can share with the town on a month-to-month basis.
I know, like and thank you, Mr. O'Laughlin, and first of all, I think having office hours, you know, like in, like between like the three of us, you know, like figuring out, you know, like in highlighting a schedule, you know, that works, and even if it's just, you know, simply three times a month, you know, out with each of us, you know, I mean, one, we have to, you know, like we are responsive, accountable to the residents, and, you know, we're residents ourselves, so to be able to have like additional opportunities to really communicate with people and to hear, you know, what their concerns, hear where they want Rockland to go, and, you know, if they are facing any issues, I think, like it's like a great idea, and I completely support that. I know Larry holds court every morning at the New Maurice. But the hours of that at 5:00 in the morning might be like a little early for some, but no, I think that's a, an awesome idea, like and then, I just to piggyback on what you also said, since I was elected, I mean, one of, and I think collectively, all of our issues have been, and, you know, like we're like in 2018 now, we're at Town Hall, and how do, and you're like residents, and, you know, and I apologize to the residents who, who sit through and watch these painstaking meetings, but we can't expect people to do that anymore, you know, residents, they, and, you know, they expect information from us, they expect us to be out there, and, like, and if we can move forward, like I know that Town Hall is a little bit in transition right now, but working with our interim town administrator to see, like if we can come up with an easy format to do some type of periodic newsletter, like, oh, you know, like having, oh, you know, whether it's, oh, like, oh, once a month, you know, having, oh, you know, selected highlights from various departments would be helpful, too. The other thing, you know, that I think would be very helpful, like in Hanover does it, Avon, Whitman, Walpole does it, I know, like a whole bunch of communities, they actually have department head updates, oh, you know, and they have like updates from their department heads that come before the board, and, you know, to give residency and the board updates about what's happening in town, what are the issues they're dealing with, like and seeing on a regular basis, and I think, you know, like in the transparency, oh, like in the transparency light, I think that could be important, but really, you know, and, you know, to really inform residents what's happening in their town, you know, what are the needs, how, how department heads like are going about addressing some things, I think, you know, like we're operating in a, in a world where over the next few years, I mean, we're dealing with all building needs, we're dealing with a whole host of needs, because they're modern-day needs, like and it makes sense to, you know, to inform residents, so they're engaged in, like in the process and everything we're doing, so, and, you know, so that would be my only thought, I mean, like, like along. And, you know, so that would be my only thought, I mean, like, like, along with the office hours, oh, you know, like, working with our interim town administrator, too, like, I mean, like, in a first, like, it may be a work in progress, because, you know, like, we have a lot happening, and we wanna get it right and manageable, and, but coming up with, like, some type of newsletter, newsletter format, and then, like, department head updates on a periodic basis.
Yeah, and it doesn't even have to be something that we mail out to the residents. I mean, it could just be digital.
No, that might be costly. Yeah, like, we upload it on the website.
Digital, it's on the website, and maybe anybody with an email account that they send to Rockland, they can get sent to their email account. You know, I know we had brought this up, you specifically brought this up months ago, and it was, it was rejected, based on the fact that the, an individual didn't think that the department heads would, would go ahead with it, that they would feel like, well, you know, you're not in charge of us, so we don't have to necessarily do that. I know I had mentioned it to Marcy before her staff meeting this past Tuesday, and, you know, you said you had mentioned it a little bit, you talked about it briefly in the meeting, and it seemed like there was positive feedback.
Positive response at the department head meeting. We didn't talk specifically about bringing department heads before the board to give you updates. We changed the format of the department head meeting from the town administrator sharing information to a roundtable discussion. The department heads were very receptive of that, and they all reported very excellent work that's taking place in the Town Hall, and the comments that I heard afterward that they all learned things about and from one another that they didn't know that their colleagues and coworkers were working on. So it was beneficial for everyone. So my thought to start this in a manageable way might be that we do utilize the website. I've already had one conversation with our new IT director, he's spoken with our website company. Other towns do have an online version of a newsletter on their website, which we could upload onto the homepage once a month. We could integrate it into the department head meeting reports, and we could work with the department heads to take what they're bringing to those department head meetings as news, and put them on the news, on the website, so that we could share with residents all of the good work that's taking place here. It's really an opportunity for people to share the good work that they're already doing.
Man, I think we're in an age, to your point, where people, people don't wanna be told, all right, it's on, it's on the website. They don't wanna go have to search for it, search for the information. They want, they want the information given to them.
I do agree, I think that would be very time-consuming, and I don't think it would be wise to start trying to mail a newsletter because of the cost and time.
Yeah, and, and very costly. But I think, I think just from the point of, you know, all that's been going on over the last few months, and without getting into that specifically, everybody knows, I think we owe it, you know, and I touched on it at the last meeting, that we owe it to be, to be better, and, and open up our lines of communication with the residents, open up our availability to the residents. You know, I think for far too long, we've operated up here, and not us specifically, but, but it's operated in a sense where the residents' needs weren't necessarily addressed in a manner that was appropriate, or that was representative of this board, and I think, you know, Marcy being in the corner office, just over the last, the last week or so, you know, while you guys were off over the world, you know, Marcy held it down, and I've heard feedback from, from countless residents that have been up here, that, you know, regardless of the fact that whether Marcy was able to necessarily fix their issue, they felt like they were listened to, they felt like they were respected, and they felt like you were, you were gonna give it, do everything you could to find a resolution for them, so.
That is a goal. I would like all residents to know they're welcome to visit the town administrator's office and share a concern in whether we can address the issue the way they hoped right away, they'll be listened to and treated with respect.
I think that, and I think that goes for, you know, I wanna speak for you guys, but I will, I mean, I know you guys feel the same way, you know, I mean, any resident that wants to, wants to meet up with me up here, by all means, come on by, you know, I'll, I'll announce, I guess, I'll take the first week, you know, I'll announce it for next, I'll announce hours for next week, once I figure out when.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would caution against would be to set a, set of criteria by which anybody would come into open forum. I mean, if you, if you had, you'll be sort of like an agenda item, but you can't, I don't want you coming in and talking about this guy over here, he's not gonna be there. I don't want you talking personal stuff, it's, it's either, you know, my, my something's broken, and I can't get it fixed, there's something missing, and I can't find it, but I don't wanna hear, you know, this, Marcy Birmingham told me this one day, and I don't like being rejected by, you know, well, who is she to talk to me like that, and blah, 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 blah. I don't want any of that, I got, we want real problems, I got an issue, you know, I got an issue with whatever.
Well, that's why I think if they come to us, if they meet with us, and then if we can't resolve the issue, us along with Marcy and whatever department had the issue might be with, or department it might be with, or, or just a better understanding of what the issue is, then we put them on the agenda.
I just wanna bring them before the time.
Yeah, yeah.
And have somebody get into a personal.
Back and forth, absolutely.
Back and forth, because we don't need that, we've, we've had that in the past, and it really doesn't work to anybody's benefit.
Well, we've talked about open forum, and the open forum is actually, in a sense, it's a violation of the open meeting law.
Right.
Because it's gotta be on the agenda, so if somebody comes up and they start talking, you know, all we can say is, well, look into it. So I think by giving this option, we are looking into it prior to getting to the meeting, and then if there's nothing, ain't nothing we can do, if there's something that we can't figure out, then we'll bring all parties that need, need to address the issue together, and we can resolve it as a board.
Good for me.
So, and I think we, we don't need to vote on that or anything like that, that's just a conversation for us.
You know, I think it's, you know, I mean, like, as you mentioned, Mr. O'Laughlin, like, and Mr. Ryan, too, I mean, like, it's what, it's why we're here. It's why we ran for office, it's why we wanna represent the town in the first place, you know, to, you know, like, we're our residents, we pay taxes, we have water bills, we have, you know, like, everything else, and we want to be, like, we wanna be part of this town, and, you know, just like our neighbors do, and, you know, be informed, and, you know, be communicated with, and that's all we're trying to do, and, so it's exciting.
Well, there's an awful lot of misinformation that goes around, and it's only 'cause, you know, if you, if he whispers the story in my ear, and I whisper it in his ear, by the time it gets over to people down back, it's a whole different story almost, so.
You can tell any.
Yeah. So anyway.
Yeah, don't tell any.
May I recommend that we talk about this, and you could possibly report back at the next meeting when you wanna establish some office hours and start a newsletter on the website, or would you like to just announce hours on the website and, and start something next week?
Well, I, I think the office hours, I don't think that has to wait, I mean, we're all spent some time up here, so, you know, I'll figure out what my schedule is next week. I'll take next week, and then you can go down the line, whoever, or Larry, if you wanna take the next week, and I can figure out.
I'll let you start, Mr. O'Laughlin.
So why don't we post those hours on the main page of the website for residents who are interested in finding out when that will be?
Yeah, they've given the, you should, like, try to set a specific time, or just individually based on?
Yeah, individually based on schedules. I mean, you can do the same thing every week.
Yeah, right, right, exactly.
But as far as the, the newsletter is concerned, I'd say probably your best bet would be to start talking about it to the residents, and then bring it up at your, your, your department head meeting.
Right, our next department head meeting will be the second Tuesday in October.
And we don't need anything for September, I mean, maybe, you know, set a goal for October and November to be the first month that comes into play, you know.
That gives us some time.
And we also wanna let Gino get settled with the IT department.
Yes, he's very busy.
Mm-hmm. So.
Okay. That's awesome. Thank you, Ms. O'Laughlin. All right. Community Preservation Committee resignation. We get a letter of resignation from Pam Murphy, who is unable to carry out the duties. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Sorry, Marcy, Town Administrator's reporting correspondence.
It's really fine, you know how much I love the public speaking part of this, anyway. So we were trying to fold a couple of items into Town Administrator comments, because we had a long agenda tonight. The first one is that we regretfully accept the resignation of Pam Murphy from the Community Preservation Committee. Town Clerk Shortell has been advertising for the opening on that committee, and I think to date, we've had one application. So I'd just like to reiterate for the board and the town that the Community Preservation Committee truly is meant to be a community committee, and I would encourage people to go on the Community Preservation Commission website and read about what the role is for that committee for a town that has passed CPC, which is new for Rockland, and to consider applying to the committee, because we would love to see this committee have residents who are committed to the effort that the passing of CPC will afford us to do in terms of affordable housing, historic preservation, and, and open space.
Marcy, how do you, or Donna, since you're still here, what is the timeline to accept applications for this?
Oh, we were.
Is there a timeline?
We had accepted one round of applications, I believe, may be over, Donna, is that correct?
Well, I mean, I think we're just announcing to the community tonight that there is an opening, so, I mean, I think.
Yeah, we could.
I think opening it up to residents, maybe for another three weeks or a month.
A month.
Would you say, okay, so if we said September 14th would be the deadline for an application for the CPC? That's a motion.
Okay, the motion is second for the 14th, the applications for the CPA, is it?
CPC.
CPC. Then our next meeting is the 18th, right?
I hate initials, you know, I really hate initials. Community Preservation Committee.
And on that, yes.
And we need a vote, all in favor? That's a good vote.
Beautiful. And on the same note, before I move on to the second Town Administrator comment, just to encourage residents to speak to the Town Clerk about committee openings, and really consider getting involved, because we really do need our residents to be involved in a part of the solution for the town work.
This is a good time for people to stand up and be heard. You know, if you wanna be part of the solution, come down and join us. We could use everybody who's really interested in helping the town of Rockland improve, to step forward and say, I'm gonna put a little bit in, I'll see where it goes, and you'd be surprised what you can get out of it. You know, you get an awful lot of good people that say nice things to you when you're walking down the street, people you don't even know, stop and shake my hand just for, because I'm doing the job that I'm doing, and they say the same thing about these guys, too. So come on down and help us out, we can use ya, Marcy can use ya.
I can, definitely use help. And the one last announcement I have is that the town has received its fourth Department of Energy Resources Green Community Grant in the amount of $210,531, which will fund five more energy savings initiatives in town this year, as well as paying a portion of the administration of the grant, which is typically a part of my salary, so there you have it. So that's good news, and we'll be starting work on those projects within the next month or two.
Awesome job.
Thank you, Marcy.
How much grant money do you think we got in the last couple of years?
Since we got the designation grant back in, I think, 2013, we've probably, approximately $750,000 in green community grant money.
Just green community grant?
Just green community. Overall, in the last three years, we've, we're about $2 million in grant money across different programs.
There you go, $2 million, above and beyond. Thank you very much, Ms. Birmingham. All right, what do we got now? Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by the individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the board of Selectmen and are the opinions and comments only of the individual member. Mr. Mullin.
I'll be quick tonight, I just want to give folks an update on the, like, on, like, on the, on the Reimagine Rockland Working Group. We had, like, our most recent meeting last night with our consultant, Ann Burke, who's back working with us, like, and it was really, like, an amazing meeting. We, as we've talked about for the past few months, we have to, and really, like, we're charged, and we've been charged this summer, like, in, in terms of a really determining, like, the structure, like, in the organization, like, of, of the group moving forward. And last night, we came to a consensus to establish Reimagine Rockland as, like, a Main Street, oh, model 501(c)(3) working group, so it would be, like, a nonprofit organization that would be separate from everything here at Town Hall, it would be an independent organization, and, so that's actually what, like, Ann Burke, our consultant, is going to help us work on for the next few months. And, like, we, oh, last night, again, we had probably upwards of 30 residents who joined us, and, oh, you know, like, and as Mr. Ryan was talking about, like, a few moments ago, the residents who are joining us are completely new to our government, they're completely new to Rockland, like, in many cases, and it is just so exciting. You know, they bring passion, they bring expertise, like, and they're really excited about, oh, not only the direction, not only the direction we want Rockland Senate to go in, but the direction we want Rockland to continue going in as well. So I just wanted to give that update, we'll probably meet next as, like, a big group, probably mid to late September, and, but we'll keep everyone updated on, oh, when that would, oh, when that will be. But we're moving forward, and one of the equally exciting about the things, like, about this whole direction moving forward, is like, a, like, a really a strong partnership, we're also, oh, continuing to build with the Social Chamber of Commerce. Peter Forman and Eric Dykman have been, oh, they've worked wonderfully with us, with our group, and, you know, like, really see, oh, the potential that we're working towards as fitting in with the goals that really we're all trying to accomplish for the wholesale show as well. So Peter and Eric and everyone at the Chamber have been great, and it's just, oh, you know, oh, there have been some points in the past few months where, oh, you know, we felt kind of rudderless, where are we going, how do we get there? And, like, and after last night, we actually, we do have a direction, we've had a direction all along, really, we've been accomplishing a lot of great things, really, with the help and support and, oh, the leadership of Marcy, quite frankly, and, but we now have, like, a more clear direction, and there's actually, there's very tangible things in the future. So, thank you, Marcy, and thank you to the Chamber, and thank you to everyone who joined us last night as well. So that's all I have.
Well, I'm just gonna take a second and go back to the beginning of the meeting, and I'm gonna take the opportunity to further recognize Patricia Foley. I'm glad the town of Rockland has finally recognized what I've always known. Long before I became a member of the board, you showed me the value of volunteerism and public service. For that, and for being a great mom, I'll always be appreciative. Thanks, Mom, appreciate all the work you do for Rockland.
That's it?
You were even talking about your mom, I mean, I would've gone on for five minutes. Well, I didn't wanna, I'm not one.
Well, I'm just sort of back from vacation, I've been out in Big Sky Country in Montana, so I'm, I'm not used to being back, and a little, can't see very far Rockland anymore, you know. I've still got my head in the clouds and mountains and mule deer and all that other stuff, but I just really wanna take the time to thank the people that are working in the Town Hall and all the town departments for holding your heads up high and, and sticking with the program, and, and sticking together during our time of need. And we have some really good people doing some really good things for the town of Rockland, and, quite frankly, hopefully, in the elections, we're gonna gain a couple more people that really care for the town of Rockland and, and really wanna make the town better. And again, I'm gonna call for volunteers, you know, we have some fine women in this town that can do a great job. We have Ms. Birmingham now, a female in charge of the town, and instead of a male for the first time in, in our history, and, quite frankly, 70% of the people in Town Hall are women. And, you know, the building department's got all the guys stuck down the corner where they belong, you know, but we do have fine women and men out there that, that we need to step forward, and, you know, all we ask you to do is take one little step, join a, some sort of a committee or an organ, or something that you can learn about the town, learn about the place you live, and, and help us out, quite frankly. And with that, I'm just gonna let you go tonight and thank everybody for stopping by tonight.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor, Mr. Mullin?
Yes.
Mr. O'Laughlin, and yes, Mr. Ryan, too. Thank you very much.